Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Finance Committee. My name is Sahira Nas. I am a member for the Downward and Chair of the Finance Committee. Thank you, everybody, for attending and welcome to the meeting. The meeting today is open to the public. For the benefit of webcast, I will ask members to introduce themselves. So if I start on this side, Mary?
I'm councillor Mary Lee, representing Downward.
Good afternoon, councillor Abiullah, another resident shadow.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Glidys Valley.
Tove Mollinson, councillor for Hillsborough.
Councillor Brian Lodge from Burley Ward.
Chair Muhammad Gekelsaw.
Glynnis Chapman, Mossborough Ward.
Mike Leary, West Ecclesfield.
Thank you very much. And if officers can introduce themselves when they are presenting their reports. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have received one petition and one question today. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuations, please take instructions from the town hall staff. Assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the... Okay, we've already introduced ourselves, so thank you very much. Item one, is there any apologies for absence?
No apologies, Chair.
There is anything excluded from the press and public? Is there any declarations of interest? Okay, no declarations of interest. Item four, this is on page 11 of the Agenda Pack minutes of the previous meeting. Are we all agreed with the minutes? That's been agreed, thank you very much. Item five.
Yes, sorry, sorry, Chair. But the last meeting, it was agreed somebody would be sending me some figures about the tenant's residual levy, and I haven't received any figures. So I wondered whether they would be forthcoming.
Thank you, councillor Chapman. We'll make a note of that and make sure that you do get the figures that you requested at the last meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, so like I said, we have got one petition and one public question. The petitioner is not attending. They will receive a written response, which will also be published on the website. But they have asked for me to read the petition, so I can do that now. The petition is by Georgia Mill, and it's to save land at the Rock Street and Neville Drive as community green space. This petition received 12 signatures. And in the statement, they have put, "We, the undersigned petition, the council, to withdraw the sale of the green space at Rock Street and Neville Drive, S39JB, to instead preserve it for use as a community green space. Recognizing the critical shortage of council-run allotments and community green spaces in the local Burn Grove and Kellam neighbourhoods, we urge the council to reconsider the sale of the land for private development. Instead, we propose that the space be repurposed for the benefit of the community, either as social housing or as a dedicated green area accessible to all residents. We therefore request the council to re-evaluate the decision to sell council-owned green areas, particularly the two acres at Rock Street and Neville Drive. Consider alternative uses for the land that prioritise the wellbeing and recreational needs of the local community, such as community gardens, allotments, public parks or social housing. Engage in an open dialogue with local residents to gather input on the future use of this green space." Officers have produced a detailed response in writing for this petition, and it will be available on the website. If members would like us to email them a copy of the response too, we can do that, just let Rachel know. All right, thank you very much. We do also have one public question. So if Zach Weine could come up and ask the question?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me in the meeting. On the 7th of February, I attended full council, asking Sheffield City Council to consider more ethical policies related to outdoor advertising. Councillor Ben Miss School, Chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, recommended I attend today's meeting of the Finance Committee, where the council's new advertising and sponsorship policy is to be discussed. Councillor Miss School said Sheffield would look to draw on best practice from around the country and take an ethical approach to products and services. So it would be great to see the council joining the likes of Cambridgeshire County, Somerset and Coventry City councils, who have adopted strong policies against harmful advertising. I'm excited to attend this meeting today to share my proposals to the council, which have been advised by experts in this matter, the Campaign Ad Free Cities, who themselves this month released a startling report showing that the majority of advertisements in England and Wales were placed in poorer areas. Notably in Sheffield, 60% of adverts were placed in the poorest three deciles, with only 2% in its most affluent third. As I mentioned on February 7th, these adverts thrive on insecurities, debt and unhappiness, promoting consumerism in an age of climate breakdown and economic inequality. Sheffield Green Party has asked the council to consider a policy which does not support high-carbon industries and products harmful to people and nature. As a representative of the Sheffield Climate and Social Justice Movement, I'd support this approach with such a policy seeking to regulate adverts for products such as junk food, alcohol, gambling, SUVs and all polluting cars, fossil fuel financiers, airlines, airports and destinations that necessitate air travel. I note that advertising of these products undermines the council's very own policies related to clean air, health and wellbeing. The council could also consider, if for-profit advertising must be used, to prioritise promotion of local Sheffield businesses, as opposed to multinational corporations that overwhelmingly pollute our public realm with their advertisements. Evidence from a ban on junk food advertising across the TFL network in London shows that the ban has not led to any drop in revenue for the authority and once more has prevented over 100,000 cases of obesity, as well as thousands of cases of diabetes and cardiovascular disease. And this could also save the NHS more than £200 million. A proactive measure from the Finance Committee could help us create a happier, healthier Sheffield, free from the pressures of harmful advertising. Taking action on this issue can discourage mass consumerism, an attitude which is driving climate and ecological breakdown, as well as harming wellbeing and local resilience. Following submission of this question, I was delighted to read the council's draft policy, which proposes restrictions in harmful advertising akin to what I've covered in this question. To comment, if I were to suggest any amendments to this policy, I would encourage that where the policy calls for restriction of advertisements of weapons, it is extended to cover all manufacturers of arms. Another amendment in similar regard is to extend the definition of restriction of all fossil fuels to all high-carbon industries. Whilst this proposed policy would be a great step forwards, many sites that are not under the council's control will still not be affected. Given the harms caused and the deliberate intrusion of digital advertising and the relationship between outdoor advertising and inequalities, as I mentioned earlier, I would very much like to see Sheffield ban and remove such advertising altogether. Thank you for listening, and yeah, cheers for having me.
Zach, you can stay there if you want to hear my response. That's fine. Thank you very much for your question today. It's really important, you know, some of the things that you highlight in your questions. The council does not have powers to ban or remove advertising out of its control, but we are going to do everything that we can on areas that we do control. The display of advertisement is subject to a separate consent process within the planning system. This is principally set out in the Town and Country Planning Control of Advertisements Regulation 27. Advertisements are controlled with reference to their effect on anonymity and public safety. The council is involved in decisions about advertising sites where an application requires the express consent of the local planning authority. When making decisions, the local planning authority is limited in its powers, with decisions being based on set conditions which are detailed in the regulation at Schedule 2, as shown, as I'll repeat now. So no advertisement is to be displaced within the permission, without the permission of the owner of the site of which they are displayed. This includes the Highway Authority if the sign is placed on highway land. No advertisement is to be displaced which would obscure or hinder the interpretation of official road, rail or waterway or aircraft signs or otherwise make hazardous the use of these types of transport. Any advertisement must be maintained in a condition that does not impair the visual area of the site. Any advertisement hoarding or holding a structure is to be kept in a condition which does not endanger the public. If advertisements are required to be removed, the site must be left in a condition that does not endanger the public or impair visual amenity. Decisions must be assessed on this basis. However, as per number one of these conditions, permission must be sought from the landowner, where the council is a landowner, it can refuse permission for an advertisement to be displaced. Local planning decisions can be appealed with the Planning Inspectorate, which deals with planning appeals, national infrastructure planning application, examinations of local plans and other planning-related and specialist casework in England. We... In terms of the policy that we are going to be approving, hopefully today, this is actually one of the most ambitious policies in the country with people at the heart of what we do. We recognize the impact of influential advertising within our communities. We recognize that ads are sometimes targeted towards our most vulnerable low-income and areas of high deprivation. We have actually gone further than national legislation to align with our council's plan values and our commitments. We're working really hard to support health and environmental improvements, so it's important that we take action where we can minimise exposure to products that are contradicted to better outcomes for our people and planet. We will give you a written response as well. In terms of the amendments that you've mentioned today, they're not actually in the written question, so can I respond to them through email? Would that be all right? Thank you very much, Zach. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, which is the work programme, which you can find on page 15 of the Agenda Pack. And Rachel, are you going to go through this for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Rachel Appleyard, Principal Democratic Services Officer. So on page 15 of the Agenda Pack is the committee's work programme. This shows all known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings of the committee. Any changes since the last meeting are highlighted in the table in part one on page 18. There are a couple of items that propose to remove from the work programme. This is where committee remits have changed slightly, so they're now falling the remit of another committee. And then one item which has been moved, and members received an update at the pre-agenda meeting on this item. I'll hand over to officers to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, apologies, I didn't make the pre-agenda meeting, but I just think it would be helpful maybe to members of the public to understand why the Millhouses Park lease has been moved. Because I wasn't at that meeting, but so I haven't seen anything that says why it's been removed. And I know other members, other colleagues have got concerns about the amount of time this is taking.
Chair, if I could just respond to that. The reasons it's been moved is for further work with the landowner regarding the negotiation of the lease. I'm not sure what else I can say on that, having no direct work on this myself. But the aim is to bring a full committee briefing on this before a decision comes to the committee. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Rachel. Yep, that's fine. There is any further questions? Are we all happy to agree the work programme? Yeah, that's agreed, thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, which is 2324 Quarter Three Budget Monitoring Report. You can find this in page 25 of the Agenda Pack.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting. The paper is to give an update on the Quarter Three Budget Monitoring Position for the General Fund, the HRA. And the appendices also include the Capital Programme Monitoring Position, the Treasury Management Outturn and the Collection Fund Outturn. I'll take you through the key points from the paper. At Quarter Three, the council's forecasting an overspend in the General Fund of £16.7 million against a net revenue budget of £493 million, which represents a variance of 3.4%. The movements between the quarters, so in Quarter Two, we presented a position of £17.4 million overspend, so there's been an improvement of £700,000 between the quarters. But we did see a large adverse movement of £2.3 million in the Education, Children and Families Committee budgets. This was due to increased forecast of placement costs and a risk around the income at our in-house provision Aldine House, plus further demand of half a million for home-to-school transport for SEN pupils. These increases in overspends have been offset by additional income drawn down in adults, underspends against budgets in youth services, improvements in commercial property budgets and some further interest income from our cash balances from good interest rates. The three main areas of overspend for the council, consistent with where we've been throughout the year, are in adult social care, children's social care and in homelessness. In adults, the service continues to be challenged by increasing demand and inflating cost base through ongoing delivery of a recovery plan actions and continuation of strength-based reviews. Solid partnership working and working with health and creative commissioning activities are in place to reduce those package costs. In children's, we have got huge challenges from the ballooning cost of placements caused by a limited supply and a shortage of foster carers to support the demand in the city. We've also got rising costs of home-to-school transport, and we're now supporting over 2,300 pupils, which has increased by over 1,000 in the last four years. The homelessness situation has arisen post-lockdown, following legislation coupled with shortage of affordable housing in the city and a limited range of options. Our use of hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation has reached unsustainable and unaffordable level. And the increase in homelessness is a national issue, as households in temporary accommodation is at its highest level for 20 years. In spite of the emerging challenges, the £47 million of saving plans that we put in place as part of the 2324 budget are 77% on track to deliver. There is however, an underlying pressure of £28.5 million in our accounts which needs to be addressed. One-off grant income and offsets from provisions have provided some relief for the underlying challenges that need to be addressed in order to be sustainable going forwards. And the majority of the issues span our key overspending areas, which is adults, children's and homelessness. The housing revenue account is forecasting a shortfall to budget of £4.8 million. This worsened in the quarter by £2.9 million since the Quarter Two outturn position. And the reason for that is largely due to responsive repairs costs. The service has continued to be challenged by increased cost of materials and is using a higher level of subcontractors to meet demands. Finance teams are supporting service managers to look at resourcing levels, including council staff, agency and subcontractors alongside activity levels to identify areas of opportunity for reducing that current spend. The issues in Sheffield are not unique, and councils across the country are facing the same challenges that we do. And the latest budgets from government offered no solutions for the pressures that we face. We have to take action at a local level to tackle these issues. We set aside £70 million of our reserves two years ago to manage the budget contingency and for overspends against our revenue budgets. Currently, we will be left with £13 million of this by the end of the year if we continue to spend at this current level. Given this position and the likely requirement for the next few years to draw on this reserve, a further £12.5 million was identified through a one-off surplus from our collection fund from last year. This was approved to be transferred to the Budget Contingency Reserve at full council. Our medium-term financial analysis highlighted a £61 million budget gap over the next four years. And the good news is we managed to set a balanced budget for 2425, which was agreed at full council on the 6th of March, and it provided details of savings that we need for the next financial year. Whilst the savings targets are lower than in previous years, we can't relax yet. We must continue to drive delivery of budgets and tackle in-year overspends and underlying issues to prevent the budget gap from widening. The appendices detail our capital monitoring, Capital Programme Monitoring Position at Quarter Three, which Damian will take you through in a minute, our Treasury Management Outturn and the Collection Fund Position. The Treasury Position follows the Capital Position and sets out the borrowing requirement based on the planned expenditure up to 2028. The key points to note are disposals of the heart of the city development are now expected to be delayed until more favourable economic conditions help maximise the benefit of that disposal. As a result, assets will be held longer and financed for longer, meaning the cost of interest and MRP, which is the impact of our revenue accounts, will be higher for longer, but somewhat offset by rentals. The paper also provides further commentary on the economic context and impact in interest rates. We've seen beneficial returns on our cash investments this year, averaging 4.8% year-to-date, compared with 1.4% for the nine months in 2223. We've also benefited from delaying our external borrowing as our cash has remained high, so not subject to expensive financing by using our internal balances. Agility in our treasury activity has been imperative this year to maximise the value of our funds. It's important to note that the interest income can't be relied upon to supplement service overspends other than in the short term. The final appendix details the Collection Fund Position. The impact of the fund doesn't impact the revenue accounts in year, and the key reasons for the variances come from favourable collection rates. The main risk to the fund is the ongoing uncertainty created by the cost of living and our residents' ability to pay. We continue to proceed cautiously with the assumed collection rates and bad debt provisions for this reason. So Damian will take you through the Capital Programme Monitoring, Q3.
I'm Damian Muckinson, I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team. I'll just try and sum my position. Overall, the value of the five-year programme has gone up from £749 million to £765 million since last quarter. But the current year's budget has fallen around £50 million from £297 to £497. And that's been around some of the re-profiling that you'll have seen at this committee previously proving around the Stock Increase Programme in housing, the Future High Streets Funds and Leveling Up Funds that have taken longer to deliver. And I think it's probably worth mentioning that there's other risks that have been associated with that. These are funds that came in sort of prior to Covid and the war in Ukraine. So we bid for funds at a certain point in time. And then obviously, the crisis has hit. And so it's taken longer to be able to deliver those schemes, get them tendered. And when we have got to that stage, we're realising, you know, the costs have increased. So they're taking longer to deliver and costs are going up. So we're having to go out and access other funds, such as gainshare funds, in order to deliver them. So the initial forecast of being able to deliver around £300 million of expenditure this year hasn't been achievable, and we've been slipping that as the year has gone on. And so that's brought us to the position at Quarter Three, where our budget was about £247 million. And we're forecasting, at the end of month nine, a £210 million spend against that budget of £247 million. So it's even below what we're forecasting to spend. And that has just been a continuing impact of schemes taking longer to get on board, and especially these larger ones, like I say, around the levelling up agenda. We are in a position where we're part of a Pathfinder pilot around that, so we've got extended timescales to deliver against those projects. So that's taken some of the risk away around those. The slippage that's still around is largely against, also on some of the acquisitions. We tried doing the Stock Increase Programme, so there were a number of properties at Cocker Bottoms that we were going to acquire from Sheffield Housing Company, and that's been slipped on into next year now. Of schemes that are forecasting to overspend, largely we are accessing other funding for those. So the gainshare funding is coming forward towards Castle Gate. In terms of the Transforming Cities Fund schemes, where they had a longer gestation period, there's also what's come on board now is the City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement. So there will be movement between various funds in order to allow us to deliver a full programme of these schemes. Forecasting has continued to be over-optimistic. I'm continuing to try and work with our capital delivery team to, you know, go back and revisit that. And we'll be doing a piece of work in earnest, especially at the start of next year, when we've done the end-of-year mock-up and we slip whatever budgets are left into next year. We'll be doing a really strong review of where people are forecasting they're going to be able to spend money, large amounts of money, try and make sure we've got that forecasting right. Because as Jane said, there's implications for that on our cash flow and then on our treasury management and what interest, when we might need to borrow. So it's vital we start to get that right. So overall, I think as things have moved on, we're probably going to overturn around £200 million, £190, £200 million at the end of this financial year. And yeah, that's largely all we need to say on it, I think.
Thank you, Damian. A number of hands went up as soon as you started presenting your report. So there's quite a few questions. If I ask... There's six people who have indicated to speak, councillor Lodge as well, seven. So if I take two questions at a time, and then I'll bring it over to the officers for a response. So councillor Leary first.
Thanks, Chair. I've got two questions. First of all, what stands out in this report is the continuing increase in overspend on the Education, Children and Families Committee. And I want to particular home in on the business about home-school travel. So it's increased by half a million pounds since Quarter One for 89 children, who will be actually, this will cover two terms. So if you work this out, for every 120 children that are getting new education, health and care plans, it's costing this council a million pounds in school-to-home, home-to-school transport, which I think is an unsustainable position to be in. What progress are we making in looking at alternative ways to get new kids on EHCPC plans to school in a sustainable way? That's the first question. The second question's on housing. And I note that for the first time, I think I've seen it in a finance report, we've said that the account position has worsened by £2.9 million from Quarter Two to Quarter Three. This is explained mainly by poor performance in repairs and maintenance and increases in disrepair costs. So have we got any quantification on the level of performance that they're doing? Are the increased costs due to use of more external contractors to carry out maintenance work? Will we get a report from repairmenters explaining the performance position? Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Leary. Councillor Chapman?
Thanks, Chair. I've got a question on Education, Children and Families, bottom of page 29, top of page 30. 1.6.2. You're saying that there's a forecast overspend for residential placements of £6.7 million, but what was the starting figure? I mean, £6.7 million might be a small percentage or a large percentage, but we don't know because we don't have the starting figure.
Thank you. Over to you, Jane.
Thank you. Sorry, just trying to find the numbers there, councillor Chapman, in terms of the context of the overall budgets. I'll take councillor Leary's questions first. So in terms of the home-school transport, there is an overarching review that's taking place, and we've got some consultants that are supporting us with that in the children's services. And what that looks at is the SEN provision overall, so not just transport. And I think that whilst we can see the increasing demand for home-to-school place, transport, the need is there. I'm not sure that the review will actually curtail the... I'm not sure that the review will actually curtail the current spend that we're at. What it might do is stop the continued growth in that area. We do have further data to be able to look at on that. But I think that, you know, we need to do some work as well, thinking about, there's other things that we can do about travel training and, you know, fleet efficiency alongside the current work as well. So I think there will be outcomes of the review, which is currently underway, but we won't see any impact into the accounts in the short term. Potentially, it'll stop demand next year. We might see some interventions that we can work on that might be able to bring some spend back. But it's at that base at the moment, and it's going to be very, very difficult to stop that or bring that down in any sort of significant way in our current revenue outturn. The next question was on the Housing, Repairs and Maintenance Service. I think we have seen some forecasts that, month on month, we've seen increasing the forecast costs in responsive repairs. And we are working alongside a new interim head of service that's in place for repairs and maintenance to sort of do some deeper dive work. So the finance team are supporting the work into looking at, you know, where the spend is, what the cost drivers for that are, particularly the use of subcontractors, as you rightly say. We have seen quite a lot of spending working at heights and heating, mechanical and electrical work as well. So we can see that some of the impact of the capital programme work on the roofing contractor, we're seeing some of the effects of that coming into the revenue accounts as well. And I think we just want to make sure that we are, the overall piece, looking to link the capital programme and the ongoing repairs and maintenance programme need to be really closely aligned and making sure that we're accounting for that in the right way. The working at heights piece, again, the heads of, the head of service and the service managers in that team are looking at, sort of, you know, are we using the, you know, staffing in the right way? Are we using subcontractors in the right places and for the right jobs? Or should we be using council staff in those particular jobs? So I think that they're really drilling down into the job detail of what, you know, where the performance is. And I think off the back of that, we should be able to sort of support with providing some more performance detail. I think what we get in the financial ledger and being able to monitor the finances, we get all the costs. What we need to then do is sort of map that alongside the other side, the performance data, which is something that we've started to do and work alongside the new team to provide that data, which hopefully should drive the efficiencies and drive some of the performance upwards. In terms of the forecast increasing month on month, I think, you know, there is a bit about education and supporting the service to have some better forecasting accuracy because that's not what we want to see. And as you rightly point out, the forecast position halfway through the year, in fact, early on in the year, in most services remains fairly stable and consistent when we see good level of financial management and forecasting. So there's clearly work that we need to do with the Housing Repairs Service to understand their numbers much more, which, you know, there's more to it than just the financial bit that we pull out of the ledger. We need to get into the detail of what the jobs are, how many we're doing, you know, where the spend with contractors are, has that increased year on year, the reasons for that, really looking at those cost drivers and see what we can do to put the actions in place to sort of solve some of those problems. councillor Chapman?
Can I just come back and comment on that? I mean, we're seven years into having in-sourced maintenance, and we're still trying to work out what the cost drivers are. We're not in a very good place, are we really?
I think when the contract was outsourced to Kia, we probably had less sort of operational control. And in terms of the amount that it was costing the council, we were paying for an overall contract. So if you like, inefficiencies may have been built into that contract price. But as we've seen it come in house, we're, you know, experiencing the costs as they come through rather than a, you know, set price. And I think getting into the detail as to why that's happening, it's more than just, it's cultural. I think, let's face it, in terms of getting some of those behaviour changes and getting, driving some of those efficiencies. But I think there is appetite to do that, and we are working closely with service to sort of support them to make the right changes. I'll come back on councillor Chapman's question. In terms of the context of the overall placements budgets, it is a huge amount of spend that we have with children's in terms of the placements. I don't have the number off the top of my head, unfortunately. It's in the hundred thousands, which, you know, you're right, in the whole context of the overspend, it's a smaller percentage, six point seven million overspend is still a significant amount of overspend. But we can come back to you with a further detail on that in terms of what the placement. Because I think that's really interesting in terms of the mix of the expenditure type and how, you know, where we're spending in different placements.
Thank you for that. councillor Mallinson?
Thank you, Chair. Regarding the difficulty in making savings, recruiting foster carers, I'm coming back to education overspends. A recent Tribune article highlights possible discontent amongst at least some foster carers. It points to this as a reason for lack of interest in undertaking fostering. Foster carers obviously provide a much more holistic quality of care and are much cheaper as well than alternatives. Do we know what's being done to find out about and address issues that foster carers have? I know there's more marketing, but are we proactively trying to find out what issues they have in order to encourage more to come forward?
Okay. councillor Shafak?
Mine's a similar point. I think it's one point six point two, where it's one point six million because the saving's not being delivered. I don't think this is the first time this has happened. So my initial question will be, is there any point in having these savings in our budget if it just doesn't deliver time after time? And notwithstanding the comments in the paragraph about this being a national issue, whether, as councillor Mallinson said, are there some localised issues as well? So that's one for me. The other one is looking broadly at some of the other savings. And it seems to be that we're down to have three million bips that are just not going to be deliverable. Is that because they're going to flow into next year, some of them? And one point six is the foster, but roughly another hot. One point four million of bips that are not going to be deliverable. Are they just delayed in time or is it a similar situation to foster caring, i.e. these bips are just not going to happen? They're worth knowing. Thank you, Chair. That was ten point ten dash four, three million one.
Thank you. On the foster carers, so I think the question is, what are we doing at a local level? I know that there's been more sort of marketing to try and increase the interest in that area. Again, I think it's, if you read the press nationally, there is a significant shortage nationally of the foster carers. So I think it is a national issue. And, you know, we can find out from service have any specific actions that what we are doing at a local level to really try and increase and boost the number of carers that we've got. But I think we are limited by the appetite that we have generally for people to be taken up to be foster carers for young people. In terms of the saving, I think, again, this is a difficult one when we're pressured to sort of come up with the savings and services are pressured to come up with savings to sort of balance the budget. The one point six saving, I think, was ambitious, thinking that we could increase, I think it was forty or so foster carers, it says in the paper, that we would be able to increase the number of carers that we have by that number. And we've not been able to do that. In fact, we've got nowhere near that. So, you know, it was ambitious but perhaps not very realistic. I think there's been more of a push this year to sort of quality assure the savings that have come forward so that we're not putting through heroic savings that actually are unachievable in reality. In terms of that rolling forward into next year, we have built into business planning that it's unlikely that that saving will be achieved. And there are other savings that mitigate and offset that in the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. So the three million savings that are not achievable at all, I think, you know, we've applied a level of realism to some of this stuff. So the foster carers one, you know, so actually that's going to be a pressure going into next year. So we need to, you know, come up with mitigating savings that are achievable to be able to offset some of that pressure. So the three million doesn't all flow into next year. Some of the undeliverable stuff does. And I think that this is the thing, we're looking at this twenty-eight point five million underlying pressure that we've got in our accounts and what proportion of that relates to things that we have covered within our business plannings and what relates to an underlying pressure that actually we need to tackle at a local level, that we need to make sure that we're bringing the budget back or coming up with offsetting savings for that. So, you know, we're working through some of that detail at the moment. So I think the answer is no, that all that three million doesn't flow into next year's accounts. But emerging pressures do come along and, you know, we have other things to consider as well. So it's a very difficult balancing act. But in terms of the savings, there's been much more rigor around assessing the realism around delivery on that because we can't keep putting through savings that are unachievable because it's absolutely pointless. And we've seen that improvement in delivery rate year on year. So last year, we achieved sixty-five per cent delivery on our bips so far. We're looking at seventy-seven achieving delivery of them next year, this year. And then into next year, we've actually got seven and a half million, which in theory sounds like a much more manageable level. In practice, we'll see how that sort of transpires because, you know, it's not just about next year, is it? It's building on the previous two years and sort of, you know, making sure we're consolidating on that.
Can I just come back on the response about the foster carers? I think the answer was marketing and it's a national problem. But my question really was finding out about what is, if there is any grievances amongst foster carers, what they are, how they can be addressed. Because if foster carers are not happy, then we can, then if we improve their situation, then we might stem the flow and not need to recruit so many. And it was also encouraged more to come forward. So it might look a bit advanced on that, but maybe if we could have some investigation of that, that'd be useful. Thank you.
Yeah, that's really useful. Philip?
Thank you, councillor Mallinson. So I saw the Tribune article that you're referring to, which sets out some of the difficulties and challenges that foster carers in the city face. I think that's a question for the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee to address rather than Finance Committee. I'll be taking the version of the quarter three budget monitoring report to their committee tomorrow. And then in response to some of the other questions on housing, Housing Committee is taking place later this week. So in terms of timing of committees, actually, it's quite fortunate that this committee's fallen today. There are other committees that fall later on during the rest of this week, where we can take some of those concerns to the committees on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Philip. I've got three more questions now, so I'll ask everyone to ask their questions and then I'll go to officers for response. councillor Elliot?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask about the foster carers as well, but I think perhaps that's something for another committee. My question just was regarding the placements. Obviously, we know that they're nearly six thousand pound a week. So getting children into foster care is obviously beneficial to both the children and the budget. And I wondered, obviously, it's not just the payments that are going to encourage people to be foster carers, but do we have an idea of where Sheffield Fares compared to other core cities? So I just wondered if that could perhaps be passed on as a question. So I was going to ask, and I'm really sorry to be boring about this, but at page sixty-four on the budget monitoring, the Stockbridge Town Fund. And I still have concerns about the transparency of decision-making, and I know I've mentioned it in previous meetings. So I've looked at the government's supplementary guidance for town deal boards, and local authorities as accountable bodies are required to report on progress every six months to cover outputs and outcomes and lots of other things. So I just wondered, have those performance reporting returns been done?
Yes, far as I'm aware, they're completed by the Programme Management Office, who are part of that. And now they form part of the Pathfinder Pilot. So actually, we're reporting on all the levelling up funds together at each one return. So yeah, that work's been ongoing with Dealux for a while now, especially as part of that Pathfinder Pilot, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, thank you. And is that information available or is it not?
I'd have checked that with a colleague who provides that information for reports. So I'll check what, how it's dealt with at Dealux, end of things, yeah.
Great, thank you. And I just wondered, have the board now engaged properly with stakeholders about the abandoned projects, you know?
Again, as far as I'm aware, that's, the towns board are dealing with that. And it's been dealt with through North Black, I think, as well. They've had briefings, as far as I'm aware. So yeah, like I said, from my perspective, my dealings that I have with officers rather than being responsible for that, I understand that's happening.
Thank you. councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It perhaps follows on a little bit there from what councillor Elliot was saying. And it's just understanding really our role in this now as the Finance Committee. Previously, in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it was the Finance Subcommittee and we had oversight of the budget. And when we had, we had meetings with senior officers and chairs of other committees when we looked at the budget implementation plans as we're going through. And we did those enclosed sessions, they weren't in the public domain, but to look at where we were. But it now seems to be that it goes through the Budget Implementation Group. And then it's understanding what our role is because items around individual budgets, so the role and remit of the various committees. So while we're looking at this as the oversight on it, I'm not exactly sure what our remit is anymore. And then, you know, looking at the Budget Implementation Group as a senior office group, does it, where does that report into? Does it have any involvement with elected members? And along the same lines, the transformational funding, transformation funding that's there, how is that, how decisions have that arrived at, where, you know, to look at? And the final one on there is how successful has last year's transformation funding been in the hit rate, if you, the run rate of the bips for this year? And if I may, I've just got, it's just one for Damian. On page sixty-four, the table, four point six is listed as cross-city bus. But it seems to relate to housing. I'm not sure of the radar in the ground. I just wonder if it's a typo that's in there?
No, it is, I think it's the ground penetrating surveys that have been done as part of the... No, it is ground penetrating surveys that have been done as part of delivering highways works. So it's about identifying where utilities are and...
Right, I see.
So yeah, it's, I had to, I put that in because it did just say, you know, G P R surveys. And so I had to check that out myself.
I was just a bit confused when it talks of cross-city bus and then it's in a housing issue.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, yeah, it's ground penetrating radar surveys there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, is that right?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, if I deal with the remit, a Finance Committee. I don't want to get into the constitutional licences, but technically it was a standalone committee last year as well, even though it was bradged as a Subcommittee of S and R because of the way it was set up. There hasn't been a significant change in its remit from last year. I do take the point, though, that its role in relation to how it monitors budget delivery within the year can be better clarified and better specified within the current remit. Because at the moment, whilst it looks to monitor that, it doesn't look to have anything beyond monitoring. There is the work that the Governance Committee is doing, which is to look at the remits of committees. And within that, we'll be looking at the role of this committee, the Finance Committee. So I'm hoping that for next year, we'll have greater clarity on how Finance Committee can undertake that role of monitoring in-year budget delivery. The separation with strategy and resources is that strategy and resources does budget setting in that it develops the budget for the following year that is then recommended to full council to approve. If I just may, and I suppose it's picking up on the questions that councillor Elliot was asking because it's my understanding there ought to be questions to a specific committee that it deals with rather than, or is it... It's understanding where that fits in, where we're talking about things that fall in the remit of another committee. This is not an overarching sort of body, is it, in that respect? It's taken an overarching view of how, of how the budget is being delivered within a year.
There is an element to which each policy committee is responsible for ensuring that it operates within the budget that is set. But I think that there is something about how this committee oversees that or how that is overseen generally by the council in relation to specific items that may be coming up, such as the things you're asking questions on today. If I might also go into the Transformation Fund. The commissioning strategy for the Transformation Fund was approved by Strategy and Resources in December 2022. When it approved the commissioning, sorry, when it approved the idea of a fund to be included in the accounts for that. Individual procurement strategies underneath that are made by officers under the delegated decision-making.
Thank you for that, David. Councillor Lee?
Thank you. I think I see where councillor Lodge is coming from. And if it's going to governance, then that'd be a good place to thrash that one out. It's really a comment rather than a question, Chair. It's about how, obviously, we seem to be, year on, year on, year, nothing seems to be done. And I'm not sure what that committee is doing to address those issues. I'm sure they're trying to do something. But obviously, we do seem to be going around in circles a bit with that one. And I take your point, Joan, about unrealistic BIPs. I think we have done that in the past. I mean, Aldine is a case in point. And then money we say we would be expecting to get from the health service, it doesn't come, it just doesn't come. Because they have a view as well and they, I'm sure they are watching their budgets as tightly as we're watching our budgets. But I just, on the broader issues, let's not forget that we've had all these years and years of austerity where money has been taken out of the council year on, year on, year, particularly social care and children's, where the demand for those services has gone up and up and up. It is very difficult then to say, to explain why so many children need home-to-school transport. Because life has got more difficult for people out there, particularly if you have got a disabled child, it's got very, very difficult. So maybe that's one of the reasons it's gone up. We've also had recently the massive upturn in inflation because of unrealistic budgets that the government have tried to impose on us. So all those things have made life very difficult, very difficult for people out there. Particularly when they've got problems and lack of resources. And we are trying to support them whilst watching our own budgets. And I think we have to be realistic about that as well. I think that's all, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Lee. Was there anything further you'd like to, no? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for the report and thank you for the questions, everyone. So this report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yep, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the Agenda Pack, which is item nine, so capital approvals, month 10. This is on page 83 of the Agenda Pack. Over to you, Damian.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll just run through, as usual, the changes that are proposed to the capital budget and the grants for issue and acceptance that have been brought forward in the current period as well. So under Transport, Regeneration and Climate Change, there's funding to be spent on feasibility of making permanent the measures that have taken place on Division Street around traffic movements and pedestrianisation that all link into the wider Transforming Cities Fund Plan for the city centre. So like I say, initially, this is just for feasibility works for making permanent the measures that were, have already been put there in one form or another. We've had actually a couple of large feasibility grants. It's known as development funding from the Combined Authority in relation to the Upper Don Valley, which is the A61 corridor and the Northern Communities, as it's referred to, which is the A6135 corridor out to Ecclesfield and out towards Chapel Town. So there's two large sets of funding there. It's £10 million for the Upper Don Valley and £25 for the Northern Communities. And what we've received is feasibility of approximately £1 million and £3.5 million respectively to build up those schemes that have been bid for already as part of a wider South Yorkshire bid that the Combined Authority put in, where they were very high level about improving public transport and active travel routes along those corridors. So we get a significant amount of, like I said, development funding for these because transport schemes of this size do take an awful long time to develop, as we've seen. So the job of what's to be done is to see what the scope of the intervention, so there's ideas for interventions, but what the actual scope that will be able to deliver within the funding envelopes. And that's the work that's going to be taking place under those two schemes, which are the Upper Don Valley and Northern Community schemes. There's some further feasibility work being done around East Bank Road, which is again around active travel, pedestrian access to bus stops, crossings and cycle routes. So it's looking at extending that Sheaf Valley corridor cycling route out. And again, this is the initial feasibility work around that. We're expecting funding from Active Travel England to be able to develop that out fully. Elsewhere, under levelling up around the Adelphi Cinema Building, we're putting in the initial budget for the demolitions and repairs that need to be done to the Adelphi, sorry, Adelphi Theatre building, which is going to be the first phase of a redevelopment of that site. There's going to be the procurement of an operator to work in that space. And then when that operates on board, hopefully we'll be able to work with them to develop the next, which will be the refurbishment phase. But initially, we need to get on and deliver some repairs and demolitions in order to make the building safe and more to time. Also in that area, the Atcliffe Aqueduct, there's work ongoing to improve the highway and the grouting around that. So it's a structure that's actually owned by the Cansels and Rivers Trust, so making a grant to them initially to complete the grouting works, which will stop a lot of the water egress that's coming from there. And then we'll be developing works on the highways to make it a more usable area for crossing between those, that Atcliffe area. So it can be used for more usefully by pedestrians. I mentioned Transforming Cities Fund earlier as something that it's taken a long time to gestate. And we're bringing forward the South West Bus Corridors Scheme. So it's moving into its delivery phase now, so increasing the budget by £2.9 million. In the report, it lists the numerous interventions around the Abidale-Ecclesall Road areas to improve bus journey times. We've got Atcliffe Waterside, so we've got a little bit of acceleration on that. Came to this committee a couple of months ago. It's a grant we're passing through to our partner, Situ, who are developing that site. There's been a small, there's been a reduction in the number of housing units that are going to be delivered on that site as a result of the planning work that's gone on. So that's come down to around 350, although I understand it's going back up again slightly. But we're having to advance some of that payment, so it's £200,000 that's been accelerated. And then we're finally regularising the budget after reports that went to S and R and Audit Committee on the Town Hall Square animation, which was the shipping containers project. The final figures are in, so we're just putting in the final budget that needed to go to deliver that scheme. Like I said, following on from the reports that went to S and R and Audit Committee about the cost of that scheme. Community parks and leisure, we've got feasibility work at Hillsborough Park about creating more accessible play for children with additional needs. So this is just 8K initially to scope out what we can do there. We're also making a grant to the developer of the Multi-Activity Hub that's going to be on the side of the mugger there. We're passing through £186K of one section 106 money that was granted specifically for that purpose. Under housing, we're adding £1.7 million into the purchase of, I think it's 47 properties from Sheffield Housing Company at Corker Bottoms. Again, this has been a scheme that's been in gestation for a while and it's been hit by inflation. So the housing company weren't able to build effectively the houses for the price that had been previously agreed. So there's been a new figure of £10.1 million in total that's been agreed for that. And there's also been a slight change to the mix. Some of those houses are now thought to be best for shared ownership. I think around 12 for shared ownership, I think it's 35 for affordable housing. And then in the Gleedless Valley Master Plan, there's a signed capital budget that we're going to reduce so that it releases funds in revenue for the security costs around the two care homes at Paracil and Castle Lane that have been demolished in preparation for developing housing on. Education, Children and Families, we've got roofing works progressing at Beta Nursing Infants and Halfway Nursing Infants. As you can see, substantial amounts there, so you're looking at around £1.8 million pounds worth of spend on those. Halfway is also going to have some work done on windows and walls that need repairing. There's the opportunity to increase around 13 places at Mossbrook School with the reconfiguration of some space that was previously used for residential care. That's going to cost around £284,000. And we are passporting a million pounds of our highness capital onto Peaks College, who are going to redevelop, sorry, Sheffield College, who are going to redevelop Peaks College to a specific post-16 SEND accommodation. So it's going to be initially 100 post-16 places, gradually increasing hopefully to around 300 SEND places. And there's a description of the various activities that need to be undertaken to do that. But the college are going to retain ownership of that building and are going to deliver that provision, which will be really useful, helping us to move children and young people through out of our special schools, releasing up places that are already sort of overfilled, if you like, in the secondary area. Under essential compliance, we are bringing forward feasibility on nine community hubs to look at installing solar PV and lighting. Going to fund that initially through the Renewable Energy Fund, but hopefully should be able to access the UK Shared Prosperity Fund from the Combined Authority to deliver on those. But this is just going to establish the roof loadings, things like that, that can say, you know, what we can actually install at those buildings. And there's been a slight increase in the work we need to do on our close churchyard boundaries. In terms of grants that we're putting out for issue, I mentioned we're passing some money to the Cansels and Rivers Trust regarding the aqueduct because they actually own that structure, so they're going to deliver the grouting works on there. The Hillsborough Hub, passing on the funds, the section 106 funds to Courtside, CIC, our partner, are going to deliver that site. And Sheffield College, as I've just mentioned, we're passporting funds on to those. And I noticed there's transposition in that, on the appendix, where it says 1416. It should be 1146, the value of the grant in there. In terms of accepting grants, we have had an offer of a further £2 million from the Joint Air Quality Unit to deliver a clean air zone improvement. This is specifically linked towards improving the bus fleet. So moving that towards low emissions. And we also had an offer of £1.1 million, which is actually capital and revenue, a species survival fund. So it's about improving habitats for various, in various woodland and other areas. So we will see the capital spend to go on that come through at a later day. But these two are offers that came through quite late, so we just need to get those accepted before year end. And I think that's it. Sorry, I said a lot again. I apologize if I speak too quickly.
That's absolutely fine. Thank you for that, Damian. I'll take two questions at a time. So councillor Shafak first?
Mine's more a comment, might be a question. I mean, first one is on page 93, 94. It's the South West Bus Corridor. And as one of the local councils in that area, I really welcome it, the actual bits, particularly the section around the Hunter's Bow round about Russell's Road junction. I mean, I know there's been a lot of controversy around red lines, et cetera, and 12-hour bus lanes. But actually, as local council, we were very keen to move on this months, if not years ago, on actually moving the bus stops, creating that lay-by near the Halmship Tennis Club. So just want to make that very clear that we are supportive of this. And actually, in here, Chair, I don't know if colleagues have noticed, but one of the things is removal of an outbound bus lane and replacement with two general traffic lanes to assist overall traffic flows, including bus movements, which is quite an interesting point to note, that sometimes actually helping everyone helps buses as well. And the other point I want to raise, Chair, is further down, I think, page one or two, and it is around this Gleedless Valley, extra security costs of £121,000. That is a lot of money. And I just want to reflect some of the disappointment that I've picked up from residents when I've been around that part of the world, that this Gleedless Valley Master Plan has been a long time in the making and people are very frustrated by the lack of progress. And like you say, Chair, there's a cost involved in lack of progress. It's, at the moment, it's £121,000. And we've really got to, as a council, get on with actually delivering that Gleedless Valley Master Plan. Otherwise, more and more of the money we have is going to go on things that don't really, you know, security is essential. It's only because we've not really pulled our finger out and got on with the job. So I don't know if there's a question in there, Damian, but it's definitely a rant to me.
Yeah, I mean, there's an allocation in the housing capital programme for the master plan. And yeah, I think there's been acquisitions made of various properties. But yeah, I can't really comment on the overall, I know that there's a lot of consultation being done around it. And that allocation remains in the housing programme at the moment, so yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment also about the new crossings under the Transforming Cities. This is really welcome news. And I know from talking to families around the Abidale Road, Bannerdale Road area that, you know, it's been particularly bad for pedestrians with lots of schoolchildren crossing. So that's really good progress. But my question was on the Corker Bottoms housing. And actually, that's quite good timing with what councillor Mahoney said about the Gleedless Valley Master Plan. Because this is sort of making me think about what's happening in my ward as well, and which is Gleedless Valley. So the council are going to acquire 47 homes built by Sheffield Housing Company, I understand. So that's really good news, especially the 35 homes that are going to be for rent. Quick calculation, you know, reveals that it's going to be about £2,000, about £215,000 per home, all in. So in Gleedless Valley, for example, where we're trying to deliver the master plan, officers have been quoted half a million per home, which may explain why things haven't really been progressing. Because obviously, at half a million, when you take into account right to buy, it's just completely unaffordable. So I just wondered, bearing in mind right to buy kicks in after 15 years, what's the average rent for one of these homes? Because I'm just trying to figure out if the council are anticipating a loss after 15 years of rent when right to buy kicks in and how this project is going ahead there and how we can sort of get one in Gleedless Valley, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I did look into this with the housing team, who are, you know, closer to the right to buy regs on this. And yeah, the cost floor protects us for 15 years. And so long as we're a prudent developer and we don't pay more than the houses are worth in the first place, we're on fairly safe ground with that. Although, obviously, the right to buy calculations are based on what the house prices might be in 15 years' time. Because that's what, it would be based on the market valuation and a discount from that. So obviously, you're in realms of not, you know, it's a very, you're trying to look a long way in the future. All you can try and do is act like a prudent developer and say, you know, we won't pay more than the houses are worth. Anecdotally, from what I'm aware of around Gleedless Valley, is that it's the topography of the sites that make them particularly difficult to build on, or it has done on certain sites, which then makes it difficult to, you know, to generate the right level of investment. But that's, I've not been involved in detailed calculation on that. But in terms of, yeah, in terms of Corker Bottoms, I did ask those questions and it is about, we're just trying to be as prudent as we can in order not to get caught out by right to buy legislation.
Thank you. Councillor Mallison?
Thank you, Chair. This is possibly more of a statement than a question, but appreciated. It's just this dichotomy really on page 88, the Upper Don Sustainable Transport Plans, which are very welcome, a million pounds to improve sustainable transport up, presumably, I think it's the Peniston Road corridor. It's sort of in parallel with that, we have the Aldi planning application in at the moment opposite Chippewa Wednesday Football Club, which is proposing to put in a slip road which completely cuts into and sort of eliminates a section of the key cycle route along Peniston Road by putting in an uncontrolled slip road off Peniston Road into the development. It also encourages car use as well, as it's got lots of drive-throughs and stuff like that, which is just not really where we should be heading in terms of the sustainability of the city. So it's just that dichotomy, you know, we're sort of spending a million pounds. So, um, it's just that dichotomy, you know, we're sort of spending a million pounds to improve the transport route. And yet we've got a planning application in to, to, um, to make it a lot worse and less sustainable. So we, we really just hope that the planning committee will reject the application and ultimately have, have it changed to a more sustainable development. But, um, that, it, it's just that, it's such a shame that the right hand and the left hand aren't coordinated in some ways.
Yeah, I don't think as much I can respond to. I, I'll be, I'll find a decision, but yeah, I understand.
Thanks. Um, councillor, um, Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. It's just a comment really about the, the investment in Shirebrook, uh, Valley and the Species Survival Fund. If anybody's been down there compared to what it was, and I grew up and played down there in, in too many years ago, to see it now, i- it's fantastic compared to what it was. Uh, and I think it's all credit to all the organisations that have been involved in there. But Parks and Countryside to achieve this grant is great news down there. It builds on and, and it was sort of, it, it wasn't particularly great that it was down there, but if you go there now, you see everything that's there. And it links through to the former landfill site of Baiton, uh, and everything through there. It's, it's a real, uh, the green lungs, I suppose, in that area, linking through between Hackenthorpe, Baiton and Woodhouse. So I think it's really good news for the city and the South East.
Thank you. Um, councillor Chapman?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just want to comment on the education and children's, page one one seven, about the grant towards Sheffield College to provide send education at Peaks College. I mean, I'm pleased it's going ahead, even though I'm still upset there's no sixth form provision in the South East. That's another point. But I'm pleased it's going ahead because really, if we get these placements within the city, it will cut down the cost and set placements out of the city and the high transport costs that we have to do. Might help in the future if once it's up and running and provide, I know that Sheffield College are going to be running this themselves, even though we're putting the money in. And I just hope that we make sure that our investment is well looked after.
Thank you. Councillor Chapman. Uh, councillor Lee?
Thank you, yes. Um, just, I talked about Shirebrook. I, I've just agreed with what councillor Lodge said about Shirebrook because I, I don't live that far from there, although I didn't play there when I was a kid because I didn't live around that area then. But it is, it is a fantastic place. And I think we put fifty thousand pounds of public health money in there some years ago, which was a good investment. But I just want to mention Attercliffe and the investments down there and how Attercliffe is on the up now, as well as Sheffield is on the up. Uh, Attercliffe is really on the up. Obviously, with the O L P is there a fantastic development. And on the back of that, we've got all these other, um, all these other developments coming through. Uh, I know the Adelphi is a listed building, so we're not going to knock it down. We're going to make sure it is there for the present.
Yeah, I guess there's, there's some other adjacent buildings.
No, because it talks about demolition, doesn't it? And it's not. It's, uh, so, you know, it's a real boon for the area and they're looking for how it's going to be used in the future. We've got an, an Attercliffe area board that is overlooking all these developments and pushing hard for, um, as much investment as we possibly can get into the area. Um, you know, and obviously you, you know, councillor Nas, there's Donald Road and the aqueduct down there is a miserable thing at the minute. But with these improvements, um, I think it will, it will stand out as being, um, as it was maybe when it was first built. So great, great stuff.
Totally agree with everything that you just said. Mary, um, councillor Ulla?
Thank you, Chair. Mine's more of a comment. Um, like councillor Mohammed and councillor Elliot, I also welcome the progress that's been made on the South West Bus Corridor scheme. And as a local councillor in Netherwether and Sharrow, I particularly welcome the, uh, proposed work on the Bannerdale Junction. Chair, whilst I support the introduction of parking restrictions and the use of mover technology, I'm a little bit disappointed that the installation of a crossing at this particular junction has been delayed due to design challenges. Given that the presence of several schools nearby, including Holt House Infant School, um, Carton Old Junior School and Mercy Secondary School, residents in my ward consistently emphasise the need, the urgent need for a crossing at this junction point. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's, there is any further questions or comments? Or Damien, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Uh, no, no, I think I covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Some great projects and initiatives in the capital strategy. So thank you for coming and, um, sharing them with us today. Thank you very much. So this report does contain recommendations for approval. Are we all approved? Yeah, that's been agreed. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, this item on, um, page one two seven. Um, it's item ten, advertising and sponsorship policy.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, I'm Nicola Allen. I'm the Advertising and Sponsorship Officer at Sheffield City Council.
Good afternoon. Great for our director of public health.
I will not be Damien. Thank you. Could not answer any of those questions. Um, okay, so, um, it's recommended that the Finance Committee approves the advertising and sponsorship policy attached, um, to this report, Appendix One, for council-wide implementation regarding all advertising and sponsorship matters with effect from the first of April, twenty twenty-four. I'll give an overview of the report. Um, so opportunities are, uh, to advertise or go into sponsorship with the council are available to businesses and organisations. Um, and, uh, national advertising laws and legislation are in place and that have to be adhered to. Um, this, these are governed by the Advertising Standards Authority and the Committee of Advertising Practice. Um, the, uh, rules of this code are followed by any agreements that the council enters into. But we do not have an authority-wide policy, um, to set out the standards and terms that must be followed, nor do we have, um, a council policy that reflects the values and priorities beyond national requirements. It's proposed that the council adopts a new advertising and sponsorship policy to govern advertising and sponsorship opportunities across the council's assets and land. Um, the policy will support the values and priorities of the council with restrictions included that will go towards supporting commitments and priorities on health and the environment. Uh, it's been developed over a two-year period. Um, consideration has been taken uh, to what the council's aims are, best practice and learnings from other organisations, stakeholder experience, commercial viability and maximum opportunity. The overall aims of the policy are to support residents in making better choices, that will support the improvement of our health and our environment and create long-term benefits and savings for the council. It will also support our wider plans to maximise income opportunities that are in line with better outcomes for people and planet. The advertising and sponsorship industry is dominated by products and services that are harmful to health and the environment, such as high-fat salt and sugar food and drinks and fossil fuel products. Policy aims to reduce the promotion of these types of products in the city, contributing to our strategic plans around improving health and environment. The, um, terms are listed, although some of the restrictions in the policy at four point two, which is on page three of the policy document. Um, in development, a best practice approach has been taken with, um, interdepartmental liaison to establish a progressive yet balanced position. We've looked at other authorities and, and, um, governing bodies to compare terms and scope, measuring outcomes. Um, there are several other authorities that have already introduced restrictions, um, maybe not as encompassing as the policy that we've put forward. Um, and we know that many more are in development at the moment. Regionally, Barnsley have already introduced high-fat, salt, sugar restrictions. And we know that Rotherham and Doncaster are reviewing and developing, uh, policies in their area as well. Um, some of the core cities, um, are also reviewing their policies. I know that Leeds, Manchester and Liverpool are looking at, um, similar restrictions. Um, also in development, we've worked closely with internal services because the policy will impact, um, a lot of services across the council. So, um, public health, climate, transport, legal, business, Sheffield and events have all worked closely in the development of the policy to make sure, um, concerns and requirements have been addressed. Some of the concern. Have gone off? No. Have included, um, our capability to continue attracting major events, um, to remain commercially viable with third-party contracts, to be able to continue supporting local businesses and to generate income. So considerations have been made and specific terms have been included in the policy that will allow the council some discretion in its decision-making. Um, external stakeholders have also been engaged with, um, those with a vested interest in the sector. Um, to, uh, uh, who've also worked with lots of other authorities in developing their policies, um, giving us feedback on how that has impacted, uh, revenue and services. Um, so the key points of the policy, um, are that it will cover all council assets, which will include, um, online media, out-of-home adverts and sponsorship agreements, to name a few. It will outline, or it does outline, who and what can be promoted across council-owned land and assets. It does not regulate decision-making around, um, applications for new advertising structures, which are governed by national planning regulations and where appropriate, the local planning authority. Where existing contracts are in place, the policy terms will be encouraged, uh, to be adopted, but not enforced, um, because they're subject to, um, existing contract terms. Um, where we have included terms that go beyond national legislation, this has been done voluntarily in line with our key priorities and commitments. Some of those restrictions that we've voluntarily included, um, include high-fat, salt and sugar food and drinks, alcohol, gambling, vaping and high-carbon fossil fuel products. Um, these have been included to, um, reduce the exposure to these harmful products and services. The proposed policy contributes to the council's values, priorities and commitments as outlined in the council plan, encompassing people, prosperity and planet. The people element, um, we are, we've chosen to adopt, uh, these terms to support healthier lives and communities. Um, and to enable people to lead fulfilling lives. We do recognise that the fulfilling lives element to it means we still need to be able to attract, um, high-profile events and deliver leisure services that people can access and be proud of. Um, so, uh, specific terms have been included that will allow us to remain competitive for the best opportunities, which is four point seven, page six of the policy, of the draft policy. Uh, with prosperity, we are looking at establishing the authority-wide policy so that we can explore new opportunities that haven't been, that we've not been able to do before or not considered before. Um, specific criteria has been included that differentiates the impact of small local businesses against large corporations, which allows us to work with our local SMEs where it is appropriate to do so, if they're in those restricted terms, um, helping them to thrive and supporting our economy. And then in addition to that, the specific clauses for leisure and events also, um, support the prosperity of the city in attracting the best operators and, um, opportunities. And from the planet perspective, um, the policy restrictions support the, um, the plans to limit the impact of climate change, um, contribute into reduction in the promotion of polluting products and services and preventing greenwashing adverts from appearing across the council's estate. Um, the policy terms also ensure that we're upholding being fair, inclusive and transparent in our decision-making across the advertising and sponsorship agreements. Public consultation has not taken place. Um, it was not, not required in this case, but consultation and engagement has taken place with other local authorities, um, with external stakeholders who have a vested interest in the sector across various different council services. Um, and they've all contributed to the development of the policy. Um, in terms of the risks on, um, equalities, public health and climate, the implications are broadly positive, let's say, um, resulting in better outcomes across all those areas. The financial implications, um, we may, we, we acknowledge that we may see some impact on revenue. There may be things that we have to say no to. Um, but the work that we've done with, um, external stakeholders has shown that, um, they haven't seen a drop in revenue, that ad providers repurpose their, um, artwork or that the ad space is, is taken up by alternative companies. Um, where we may see a drop in revenue, um, we have, uh, plans to run, um, communications and marketing promotions to address that because we, the plan is that we're opening up lots of opportunities that we've not had before. Um, so in summary, um, the policy will ensure that the council has a fair decision-making process, um, that the whole authority can work to and know where they stand. Um, we have mitigations in place to manage the financial, potential financial impacts. Um, and there will be long-term predicted savings, um, and benefits to the authority and the pressures on our services. Um, and we're also sending a clear message that the things we've committed to in the council plan, um, run through everything that we do. And I don't know if Greg, you might want to add some stuff on the public health side of things?
I'll pick up through questions.
Yeah, okay. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, Nicola. Um, got a few, um, members who want to ask questions or make a comment. So councillor Mallison first?
Thank you, Chair. It's actually a comment, really. Um, we really welcome this, this move. I think it's fantastic move forward. Um, uh, I think a lot of hard work's gone into it and research, background research. Um, uh, you know, the, the ethical side of it, the, the categories that, that are being covered are, are, are very good. Uh, and bringing together what's happening nationally, put all into one policy is brilliant. Hopefully it'll be something that's taken forward by others as well. Um, an important aspect of the policy is that it differentiates between advertising, um, that local businesses may need locally and advertising from national and multinational corporations on large illuminated boards. Um, the, the policy, so in, in order to support a transition away from a sort of throwaway carbon-intensive culture, we, we do need to progressively reduce and even eliminate advertising from these, on these big illuminated boards. Um, uh, and move towards a city which sort of, um, doesn't promote waste, basically. waste, basically, and a throwaway culture. So this is a good step in that direction, I appreciate that there are further moves that needs to happen in the future, which are beyond our control at the moment, but it's great, thank you.
And we have got a two-year review period as well, so we'll monitor how the landscape's changing and changes in the city, changes nationally, and also the impact of the policy itself over that period, so.
Thank you.
Councillor Elliot?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Nicola, this is really good, really encompassing, like you said, really progressive policy. And I think we all know that obviously advertising works, otherwise people wouldn't use it. So this policy recognises that advertising actually really does affect and influence the way people think and make decisions, and the council have got responsibility to put measures in place. And there's been some research done by our free cities, so I know you've worked with, you did a case study in Sheffield that showed that advertising and inequality actually go hand in hand with some quite interesting stats about the least deprived, you know, the deciles and actually having much more advertising than the least deprived, the most deprived areas, or the way around. So I'm really pleased it recognises that it's irresponsible to promote healthy food, but also gambling as well, so thank you for that, and it recognises that gambling's a public health issue. My questions are, I suppose, this policy doesn't deal with the positioning of boards, does it? Because I know in Sheffield, and I think I've raised this before, we have like boards right in the middle of cycle lanes. Is that something that would have to be a further step with regards to planning?
Yes, that's right, all those decisions are done through planning. And they're kind of set to certain specific criteria that planning have to judge them against.
So if we had something in the local plan, for example, would that cover it?
I'm not sure, Greg.
I'm not sure, is the honest answer. It's one of those things that people write to me regularly about, there's a massive hoarding right in the middle of the cycle frame. I'll take it away, I genuinely don't know the what can be done about that, but it's one of those weird idiosyncrasies, this is about what's on the boarding rather than where the boarding is. But I'll commit to taking that away and working out the correct answer to make sure that the right level of common sense prevails.
Really appreciate it. I mean, I did ask the leader in the full council meeting in February, and I still haven't received a response, so it would be good to get some clarification on that. Another question is, so we know that J C Deco and Clear Channel have, I think it's about 146 advertising boards across the city, so that doesn't include advertising on bus stops and phone boxes and stuff like that. So can you explain who has responsibility for those? Presumably that's not within the council remit either, is it?
No, it's not. All the bus stops are managed by, from a regional perspective, so it's S Y P T E. So they've not passed these restrictions at this time. I have actually reached out to them to see whether they're considering anything at the moment, or what their actual policy is, whether they've got any say over what goes on there.
Just to add, a single ad campaign or a single policy isn't going to make or break an obesity epidemic or a gambling harm epidemic, but what it does do is set a tone, and we hope that others will follow, including J C Deco, including Clear Channel, but including other parties that own advertising estate. They all said, with regard to the junk food ban on transport for London, they all said there would be a massive loss of income. It didn't happen, actually the opposite was the case. So I guess if we set the tone, we hope and will gently encourage others to follow.
Yeah, I agree, so maybe the regional authority will follow suit once they know.
Yeah, and with Barnsley have already passed some restrictions, and we know Rotherham and Doncaster are also looking at things, so it may be that once we've got a broader regional collective that...
Councillor Elliot, in terms of the board that you're talking about, the display of advertisements is subject to a separate consent process within the planning system, and that was because of the reply I gave to the earlier questioner. And all that is set out in the Town and Country Planning Control of Advertisements for 2007. So a lot of that information, I think, will be in there, in terms of where boards are placed. So it might be useful just to check on that and to see.
I do have something to add actually on that, because I've been looking at all that, and it is quite complex to understand, but there is another, because you asked about the local plan side things, there is another authority that has built something into their local plan, I can't remember which one it is now, it might have been Bristol. But they've still said that even though they've built some terms into their local plan, that it could still be subject to appeal by the planning director, I think it is, so although they can try and have more of an influence, I think still it would come down to the fact that it was measured against these national regulations.
Thanks, sorry, can I just ask one more thing? I've just reminded myself on something. I also asked the leader about this, because when I asked questions at full council, it came back that the energy is all renewable energy, and that is down to the providers to cover that. That's not something that's covered in this either, is it? So do we know where that would come into things?
That would all be part of the planning process again, yeah. But I think most of these organisations are now doing it voluntarily because they recognise that it is a big issue.
Thank you. Councillor Levery?
Thanks, Chair, thanks Nicola for an excellent report, fully supported. Just to note, I note the small drop in revenue income, but experiences at other councils haven't had, that hasn't materialised, and of course looking for other revenue streams in terms of advertising, which is going to outweigh that, so that's great news. Really important that we've got exemptions in place for small, medium enterprises, we've got to make sure we do protect them, they're not in the market with the big multinational corporations, so protection's needed there. And also, considering the ethnic minority communities and their businesses, and fast food is one of their key businesses, protections there is important as well. So thanks for what you've done, thanks for getting those protections in place, and I welcome the report, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks, welcome, this is about time that we formalise things more and go through, but it just makes me, just a couple of questions and things, so we have some control over our own assets and what's advertised there. Where does that leave us with things like the theatres? And I'm thinking in particular, the World Snooker has changed sponsors over recent years, and it's gone from tobacco and it's gone through betting, it's now with a car retailer, which again, you know, you sort of think, where do we start, where do we go on this? But what happens if they look to change their sponsor, where does that leave us again? Because that is, you know, World Snooker is synonymous now with Sheffield, and I think we'd all recognise it'd be a blow if we lost it. And then, some of the other, so like the major sports facilities, the City Hall and the arena are coming back from the trusts and coming back to the council ownership, but then going out again. Where does that leave us if they're wanting to, if events, they wanted to put events on?
Yep.
Which is sponsored by something which is contrary to our policy? Where does that leave us in those sort of things?
Specific terms have been included that allow us to have negotiation conversations around third-party major events and some of these third-party contracts for the arena and City Hall and the new leisure providers, I know those are already ongoing. So obviously the arena's already in place, and we have been involved in the discussions around the heads of terms for those negotiations. So we don't say that they will explicitly have to abide by all the terms of our policy because they are being managed by a third party, but where we can influence and bring them as close as possible to what we want to see.
If I may, Chair, that's what I meant, because they're our facilities, but we're leasing them to someone else, aren't we? And like the theatres are in a separate trust, I think, so just understanding where that fits in with things, because see, Greg is jumping at the bit to come in there.
So some things we can control and will within terms of the policy that Nicola set out, some things we can't control, our job is strong push, strong steer, set the right tone, the right narrative, hopefully, but not guaranteed others will follow. Premiership, football and gambling is a particular bete noire of mine. I don't control the premiership, so there's not much I can do about that, but I'd rather it wasn't the case. Ditto, snooker was once a bete noire of mine, and I absolutely agree, we want snooker, it's an amazing thing to come to Sheffield, but what would happen were, a very hypothetical example, Smith &amp; Wesson to be the sponsor of snooker. Well, we can't control that, let's be clear, it's a World Snooker event that happens to be held in Sheffield, but our job is to set the right tone and narrative, and for the things that we can control, then the policy clearly does matter, but some things will just fall outside it.
Thank you. There isn't any further questions or comments, so I'd just like to say I'd like to echo what colleagues have been saying today. I also welcome this, and there's a lot of hard work that has gone into this, so thank you for that. I absolutely agree with councillor Elliot's comments about the impact on inequality, you know, and areas of high deprivation where sometimes sponsorships and advertisements are targeted. But this is an ambitious policy, and the advertisement and sponsorship, you know, we know that area is dominated by products that are really harmful to the health and the environment, such as junk food and fossil fuels. You know, we had a really good discussion in the briefing when you came, Nicola, about these issues, and we're really pleased that you have picked up on them and put them in the policy. But I think the policy, you know, will aim to reduce promotion of these products, I think it's going to take time, but it's going in the right direction. We have to minimise exposure to products that are contradicted to better outcomes for people and the planet, and I think this policy is definitely going the right direction in terms of that. But we have also taken a balanced approach to ensure Sheffield can still attract ambitious opportunities for the city and allow support for local businesses, so, you know, well done, and I think it's a really good report. We do have to agree this, so our members agreed with this recommendations, yep, that's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, moving on to item 11, which is page 159 of the Agenda Pack, changes to the Constitution, Part Four, Financial Procedure Rules. Over to you, Philip.
Thank you, Chair, good afternoon, committee. My name's Philip Gregory, I'm Director of Finance and Commercial Services. So this report sets out the financial procedurals, which we also call the finance regulations. These are an important part of the council's financial governance and are part of the council's constitution. They provide the rules and the framework for the council to operate within, both to protect public money and give clarity for members and officers regarding the financial management of the council. The changes in this report, which are detailed in Appendix One, highlight the changes that we're making to the finance regulations. They're significant enough that they will then be reflected in changes to the Constitution that require full council approval, which will happen at the May meeting of full council. The only other thing that I would highlight to you is that on page 213 of the pack, there is a duplicate paragraph or section which relates to any changes to the overall level of resources set out in the budget, and there are two versions of that paragraph that have been left in the document. The first version is the correct one, the second version of that paragraph will get taken out for the full council version. So just to be clear, we picked up that there was a duplicate paragraph in there, and we'll take out the one that's not correct and make sure that the full council one, version of this report includes the correct version, which is the first version that you see on page 213. But otherwise, I'd have it to take any questions that members might have.
Councillor Malison?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, I think, well certainly speaking personally, I'm not sort of an expert on these things, so whether the changes are, I can't really tell what impact, any particular change, they all sound reasonable to me, and I'm sure they're fine. I'm just wondering, you know, whether the changes are audited in any way, whether they go to an external body or anything to check over, just to make sure that no mistakes have been made or whatever, yeah, thank you.
That's a good question. So the Constitution isn't audited per se, it will form part of our annual governance arrangements, so the annual governance statement that we look at every year will cover whether the Constitution is fulfilling its duty, which the auditors will look at, the external auditors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. There isn't any further questions or comments? So this agenda item also has a recommendation for approval, are we all agreed? Yep, we're all agreed, thank you very much, and that's the end of the Finance Committee. Thank you very much for your attendance, and thank you to the officers for the presentations.